Yeah, exactly.
And it's not that, maybe that.
It's Josh, what's Josh?
He's, yeah.
He was.
He's supposed to be here.
But is he on Zoom?
Oh, no, he's in Portugal.
Oh, well, that's right, that's, that's the Josh. I thought it was the other Josh.
And she said his regret.
Okay.
No, bummer.
On was Kevin.
Can't ever.
Yes, I think so, yes.
There you go.
Moderator of council. Okay, so Kevin was on.
Right, okay.
So hopefully he'll switch over.
I cannot find the cast from twenty-two.
I couldn't find it either.
I have an email that it was sent to me, so.
I don't think it is in our board docs, so that's, we should make sure it gets there. Okay, make me feel better, because I found the two thousand nineteen.
Well, the bottom of it says updated twenty-two. So that's it.
We're live again. I'm sorry about the confusion on the Zoom links, but we should be on the right Zoom now.
Okay, I'm letting Neil and Jay know.
So at this point, I'm gonna turn it over to Linda. Did you have anything to update or is?
From council?
Yeah.
No, we had a, uh, nope, okay, I'll just say to that.
Okay.
Great summer.
Anything on is telling me. Oh, that's right, that's right.
So you can see that the RMS report is in board docs. Um, one of the things that I wanted to share is we've really increased our enrollment this summer. Uh, I know that when we budgeted last year, we projected three hundred fifty-five students. We're currently at three sixty-six. So that's a really wonderful change. Our eight, our some, the sixth grade um, has eighty-seven total, seventh grade at a hundred and forty-five. That grade has fourteen new students, new to the district students. And the eighth grade has eight new students for a total of a hundred and thirty-five, so.
And they're moving from into the district or they move?
Those are all into the district. Family, yeah, but I liked the budget to actual number because.
And is there any potential, uh, uh, student teacher issues coming up? RATIO?
They're all scheduled.
Nice.
Nice. Anyone have any questions?
Sorry, just to repeat that, what was the number, three sixty? We're at three sixty-six? Okay, um, yeah.
Nice. Great, thank you. Uh, moving on to Hanover High School, Julie, do you have anything?
Yeah, so I do, and it's on in board docs, and if you'd like me to type up what I have, I definitely do that.
We can capture it on YouTube.
All right. Um, so first thing, we had coordinators retreat today, so teachers are back, or some of the teachers are back. And I wanted to thank Rob, and I don't know if I've said this in the past, but Rob, it comes to all of our weekly, twice a week leadership meetings um, at the high school, and it's really great to have that, so let's a shout out to Robyn today. Um, in terms of numbers, just so you know, like the middle school, we're climbing. Um, we've been watching it all summer, and that's why in non-public today, we're gonna talk about an addition of a class. Um, and then we're watching, it's mainly ninth grade that we have to watch, and it happens in classes that attract a little bit, because then you can't just take the whole class and divide it by ten or eleven, you know? You know, so, um, we have a couple other areas that we're watching. It's in science mainly right now, and what we had. Oh, I don't sound great. I like hearing my voice, but anyway, the, um, we saved, like, we tried to really do the numbers trimming it before. It's, we had saved some money um, that we're just trying to figure out where to put it. So I don't think we're gonna have to come to you besides approving people, but we are slowly gonna add sections, and if we don't this semester, we will next. Because sometimes what happens on day one of school is people disappear that didn't tell us they weren't coming. Um, so that's that piece there. Um, our new admin team is, has been great. We're getting to know each other this summer, and we have some new people in the office. And I think you're really gonna enjoy our new assistant principal. He's lovely and, um, really calm, which is great to the rest of our storm, so that is wonderful. Um, but you'll really enjoy meeting him, I'm sure, and we'll have him come here and introduce himself at some point. Um, full block schedule this year with the Wednesday um, hybrid, and we're excited about that, to run one schedule instead of two. Um, we have a growth and improvement plan this year um, that's over three years for, that I think matches really well with the strategic plan, and that was me ask, push, right, and so two of the goals in there are curriculum goals, which match with the district goal. One of them is a mission statement, um, growth and improvement strategic plan, mission of a graduate, or vision of a graduate. Um, and looking at that with one of our leadership groups, figuring out what we're doing well and where the gaps are, and trying to figure out over the next three years how we address those gaps. And then the other goal is a staff and student well-being goal, um, that we're hoping we've created the PD for this year dealing with that. Um, and we're hoping to, to address some of those issues, but also we'll look at data to help identify that, so we have some people crunch data last year um, in terms of different groups in our school and how they're doing GPA-wise, and then how they're doing socially, and trying to use that data to inform where we're headed. Um, a few things really, really quickly, and then I'm out of here, so you can move on. The, the opening day schedule is a little bit different for us. We're trying to do a softer start without a ton of homework on the first day, and doing rotation, getting a lot of things out of the way that take class time later, like photos, safety things. So we're gonna be doing it a little bit differently, so if you get in the school, you'll notice that hiring process, we're trying to, we do a lot by committee at the high school. We had an equity question that was added last year for every hiring committee to ask. And admin this year created five more questions with rubrics that every committee needs to ask, just to try to standardize that a little bit more. Um, and then this is sort of the fun part, we're moving to every year, we get asked about when homecoming is, and then there's dilemma about why homecoming is around a certain sport versus another, or women's sports versus men's sports, and all of that. So we are the new unveiling this year spirit weeks in the fall, winter, spring, because homecoming is very fall-centric, and we would like to honor all the things that are happening other times, and that, in an effort as a school, we're gonna have a pep rally each um, season, ending with a dance after two weeks, and all kinds of cards to, it's, that you can get points for going to plays and sporting events and chorus concerts and all of that. And we're trying to add a little bit of spirit and also try to honor all the things going on, not just the things that happen in the fall, and not just certain themes. So you'll see that, we'll try to invite you to all of it, and there'll be a bear at every event that will stamp to the card, and you can have a card and all of that stuff, so I think I'll be of other people that can help plan that. Well, I'm very supportive. Yeah.
Can you talk about tuition students?
So the last I looked at, Jamie might have got it right. It was one forty when I looked last, and now it was.
So you've got more than I do. Last I looked, there was one thirty-five. I took off five, because the, probably five of those that we're counting are not tuition paying, right? They're our internationals. So.
So one third, but well, and, and not all of them are a hundred percent us, right, because they're fifty, they're fifty, fifty split with.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, because in the budget, we had one nineteen, but that is like it, yeah, that, yeah, well, one nineteen, um, is not full body students, it's, some of them are.
One nineteen took into consideration pushing forward the students that were taking vocational classes at Hartford.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, um, once I get the list, which I haven't gotten, I've gotten rough numbers from folks. Um, probably within the first week of school, I'll get that list. And then I will know which ones are in vocational or not, and give you the numbers, the total number.
Thank you.
It's still, but it, it's a help. It should still come above one nineteen.
Julie.
Um, similar question for Anissa, do we have tuition students in that increase?
I don't know where our numbers are, but I don't know of new tuition students.
I think they picked up one name.
Thought she said one name.
Just our budget for fun fact, uh, for RMS, we had nine tuition students.
Yeah, but new ones.
Yeah, yeah, you know, I know, I'm just saying.
I don't know how many may have left.
Okay. Kim. Or who did you explain fun fact? How's that a fun fact?
Oh. How is anything?
So, so we have to vet all that information, because many families who are paying tuition at middle school levels want to live here. And some of them, you know, they buy homes, but they don't notify me, and I don't know until September.
Fun fact.
Jamie's got their first call.
Any other comments or questions for Julie? Thank you. So we're now gonna move into non-public, but before we do the, the hiring, does anyone have any questions, concerns about the Hanover High School or RMS individuals, so we don't have to talk about them in non-public? And then we can let the, the principals go?
I, I do. Yeah, but.
Which one?
Uh, middle school.
Okay. So does anyone have any questions about the, uh, world language FTE for the high school? Okay, so Julie, you don't have to come in. Um, so at this point, we're gonna. Um, so we're gonna move into non-public to discuss, uh, student best interest tuition waiver and the RMS world language position. And then, uh, we'll come back out, so um, at this point, does someone wanna make a motion? I think it's two and three.
Oh, God, I always get that.
C dash.
Sorry, I raised my hand. I moved to enter into non-public session at seven fifty-four PM under RSA ninety-one dash A colon three.
A C K.
Huh?
A C K.
A C and K. Thank you, Kim.
I'll second it.
Uh, Kelly?
Vokal, yes. In the apartment, yes.
I'm an ass.
Johnson, yes.
Kristi, yes.
Nelson, yes.
Barry, yes.
Neil?
Odell, yes.
Okay.
Thank you, we'll be back shortly.
Are we gonna call him?
I do.
Yeah, we'll call you.
Yeah, you can go.
You're good. Thank you.
I think I can do it.
Yeah.
I moved to approve hiring Jennifer Groves as a point four of FTE World Language Teacher, Margaret Miner as a point five O Visual Arts Teacher at Richmond Middle School, increasing Penelope Prendergast's contract as a World Language Teacher by point two O at FT at Hanover High School and. Oh, shoot.
Hire.
Hire Tom Worten as a math teacher at point nine FTE at the high school. As presented.
Tony going around.
McConnell, yes.
Cartman, yes.
Karen, yes.
Paul, yes.
Johnson, yes.
Kristi, yes.
Nelson, yes.
There is.
Is Neil back on?
He's on.
Odell, yes.
Okay, moving on to approving the tuition waiver. So this is a request from a family to waive tuition for a student for one year. So this is a one-year waiver. Would someone like to make a motion?
Yeah, I moved to approve waiving tuition to Hanover High School for one student for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year as presented.
Wait a second. Kelly, going around the horn.
The Kamala, yes.
Cartman, yes.
Time and no.
Paul, yes. Johnson, yes.
Kristi abstained.
Nelson, yes.
There he is.
Oh, this is stressed, sorry. Oh, Garrett, sorry, Garrett, there's not a lot of light. Neil?
Odell, yes.
Odell, yes.
Odell, yes, okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to business requiring discussion, budget guidelines and timeline and I assume that's Kim and Jamie.
Yes, looking alive.
Fun facts.
We're gonna have lots of fun facts today. Um, so if you can, um, and I realize it was uploaded today just because we had our meeting recently, so this is hot off the presses. If you can open up Dresden Budget Draft Budget Guidelines twenty twenty-three, it's the middle document in, um, that's what I'll be speaking to. So why am I speaking? I'm so great, so I am the Budget Committee Chair for Dresden this year. Um, and we met with the SAU Budget Committee combined last week to kick off the budget season for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Um, and so this is really the first part where we talk about the macro level, what's going on in our communities, what's going on in the economy. And then we also kind of establish what kind of our guidelines, guidance to administration as they prepare the first draft of the budget and kind of in general, what do we want to see? Um, the Budget Committee discussed, uh, and basically what we discussed is try to just be summarized in these guidelines. Um, so I'll kind of just hit quickly each little paragraph here. Um, and so the big picture is that this is really going to be the first budget that we have an adopted SAU seventy strategic plan. And so we're going to be looking as a budget committee to kind of pair that with the strategic plan and just seeing like what items and we'll talk more about what those new initiatives could be, but obviously as with a new strategic plan, you know, the buildings still haven't really gotten to digest the plan yet. And so there will be more things, um, or different things to be added than what's just discussed here. Um, but that's kind of our first point. Uh, the second is we did look as a budget committee and looked at like what the economy is doing. Um, thankfully inflation is not as high as it was last year. Last year on the time we were at the high like six, seven percent inflation. Now it looks like we're now kind of dropping down into that more normal historical levels of two to two and a half percent range. So we're kind of in that two point six. You look at the Northeast region and that's really what we were using when you're forecasting that status quo quick model that the budget committee looks at as the basically a roll forward of one budget to the next year. Um, you know, we did also look at housing and obviously all those rising cost of living and that kind of a thing, which, um, is is a challenge for both operations in the district and also, you know, for our taxpayers. Um, the, we, um, wanted to highlight that this, as we said this last year, um, but this year is probably going to be the first year that, um, or this budget would be the one that, um, the Norwich Weighted Pupil Study, the tax law impact would be impacting. We thought it would impact last year, but that got extended. So it's this year. Um, and so we wanted to highlight that it has a potential to increase only in Norwich, right? We're not talking Hanover, but the Norwich property taxpayers, um, up to twenty-seven percent is our best estimate at this time. Um, and we understand that there will be more updated information coming in October. So by the time the Budget Committee looks at the first full draft of a Dresden budget, we should get to know a little bit more of what's happening, um, with the state level decision there. Again, that's like the alien came from outer space has nothing to do with our state or our local, um, operations or what what we're spending locally. It's, um, a state law change. Um, so that's what would kind of with that background in mind, um, we thought as a budget committee that it might make sense for when we look at the first draft of the budget that we actually kind of have two drafts of the budget because of that maybe is this a step change? Um, or not, right? And so we essentially looked at a quick model, which I can talk about later, but basically saying next year's budget, if we could see the first draft being in within a corridor of option A, um, being this, um, a one point one nine percent increase, which is basically if you just world the budget forward one year. Um, that's where you would end up. Um, we'll explain why it might seem low compared to prior years, but we'll explain that. Um, one point one nine percent would be kind of the status quo. Let's see option A and then option B, maybe on the higher side would be a budget of a three percent increase, which would include likely those like strategic plan initiatives. So we just wanted to have a little bit more options and maybe this year might feel a little bit more option based and we kind of talk about the budget with our neighbors and figure out what the board should do. So that's kind of those two bold sections in the budget. Why we say overall not have a targeted increase of more than three percent, um, but actually see it in two different versions. Okay. It's that, I feel like I'm talking a little bit too long here. Um, okay, so the, the quick model, um, then when we looked at it, again, it had that one point one nine percent is that roll forward. And on page two, I won't go through all the details, but just to show that these are, um, what those projections are based upon. And, um, for, you know, uh, highlighting, uh, that the healthcare premiums are estimated increase at eight percent, right? We'll learn later on if that's a good estimate or not. It could be fifteen, it could be four, right? Um, and so we will kind of keep that in mind that that one point one nine percent or three percent may be aggressive or unrealistic and we'll kind of figure that out as we go on, but this is the guidance for now. So those are the, the estimates. The big thing that I, I wanted to say is that the quick model assumes a choice, really the only thing that's like a choice in it, right? Was our, our just, uh, a decision was built in to, um, pay down all of our outstanding debt. So, um, to base, cause if, if we didn't, right? There would be a tremendous drop off. Um, and so we have been talking about for years now, you know, this is going to be one of the last large payments in Dresden and that we were going to kind of take that normal debt capacity and kind of pay down what we have in, in our, um, uh, and even if we do all that, so we'd have zero debt after that. Um, the debt service from last year's, this next year's budget will still decrease by three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. So I just wanted to kind of get you a sense of, um, that change there. So, um, so, you know, if, if we wanted to have less of an increase, for instance, and want to not pay down all the debt, we could, um, but just wanted it to give you a sense of that. Um, as far as what the strategic plan, the, the new things, the non-status quo things, the new things, the strategic plan, those are in those next item of bullets on the bottom of page two. Um, I will highlight because we talked about the climate action plan earlier today. You know, number one bullet is the buildings and, and grounds improvements, um, uh, based on the audit we just discussed in SAU earlier, in particularly in the areas of safety, sustainability and adjustments to climate change. You know, we had discussed that and, and highlighted that. Um, but then there are also others that were discussed and, um, they're, they're listed here. I will add, um, and that for, we had a discussion about seeing in the first draft in November, a what-if analysis if Norwich sixth grade moved to RMS and a couple of other, um, things, uh, you know, increasing revenue opportunities and other kinds of things that we had talked about. Okay. Um, so, so that's basically it. Um, I, I will say that this year because of maybe the uncertainty around, um, the Norwich tax situation, that this might be a, a year that we are getting more creative with our communications in, on the budget. And, uh, so, you know, really happy to, to entertain ideas. We will say like we did in prior years, that really if you have any great new ideas, these, these budget committee meetings are open to the public. Please feel free to come, um, come to board meetings with ideas. You can talk during public comment, absolutely, even if there's not an agenda item. Um, and, but we really do need to hear from you sooner than later. And so that's why at the very end of this budget guidelines document that hopefully the board will approve, um, we're recommending that, uh, Tuesday, October twenty-fourth is kind of the last day. That's our, or whatever the, the regular October, um, board meeting is, if that's, if it changes the dates. Um, that's kind of the last day because starting in the first week of November, the budget gets really rolling. Um, so, okay, that is it. And if anybody has any questions, basically that's the guidelines that we are looking to adopt.
Jimmy?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out apologies that I hadn't, I thought I had, I hadn't, I just don't, I mean, I posted the quick model on the board docs. If you refresh, it's there for you. I'm sorry, I thought I already posted it. It was on the budget committee one.
And the, the budget committee looked at the quick model last
Yeah.
week, so that's how we actually came up with that.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions for Kim or Jamie?
Okay, you, you made a comment, I said it, but it's only the initial budgets guidelines only at one point nine, that's quite low and said that you would say why, so what, that seems really low concerning healthcare that's going out, I mean.
Yeah, because it doesn't have the effects of a potential teacher, um, negotiation settlement. So, so you don't have all of the So so you don't have all of those increases for the teachers' wages in this one. In in addition to the fact that we've paid off the last big debt payment. So any debt payment that we might pay off is still going to be three hundred and something thousand less than what we would have been doing. Okay.
And I'm sorry, explain to me the debt payment thing. So you you may pay off the debt.
So so we paid off our last three million dollar payment, August eighth. And when we went out to bond for the turf field. Even though we took the loan over a, I think it was a ten year period, we told the public we would pay it off in the sixth year. Okay, because we knew that the debt was going to roll off the year before that sixth year. So that's being pulled in in total. And then even with that pulled in, there's such a small number. We could essentially also pay off the one point eight that we just borrowed for both the fields and the track. And there's only one loan that will be left behind that we cannot prepay because it's a bond payment.
Okay.
So we could essentially pay off all the regular loan payment installment payment debt that we're sitting on.
And still be lower than our.
Two thousand nineteen.
Brand new.
Brand new.
And what was the cost of that?
Uh nine hundred and eighty seven thousand, right around there.
And how long is it supposed to last for?
Fifteen, fourteen, fifteen years if you take proper care of it.
What's the annual like? Care cost that you have to start making more?
No, so the little the little um. Yeah, the pellets, right? There are pellets that sit in between the turf. It keeps it upright.
Yeah.
So you have to fluff those like every three or four years. That's a more expensive than just normally you vacuum it or blow it off. And so I think when you fluff the the pellets or read whatever. It's like twelve grand.
And we're fluffing them on our on the schedule.
So yeah, yeah, we're we are. Tony's been very meticulous about taking care of the turf field on the proper schedule.
Would anyone like a presentation on the fluffing?
But we just paid off the loan for that then.
No, this was the twenty. Twenty year loan, forty two hundred dollars for the.
Yeah.
The high school, the Richmond Middle School, the Hanover School improvements, and I think there, I don't know, but that was the year they did the big.
Right, but I'm sorry, I think you just said the six, the the turf you also just.
We can in this bit budget that we're building.
Yeah, and so it would be paid off after six years then if you were to do that.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions, Deb?
I just have a really quick question. The final sentence in your draft. About using various communication methods such as town listservs and principal emails. Those are not, you're not suggesting individual board members go out there. You're talking specifically the principals' letters and. The board chair perhaps, but I I don't think we are not individually supposed to go to our list serve and say.
Deb, I only want you to go door to door.
Years of experience.
Yeah.
Oh, I know good at that, but I just hope that I think I think it's a really good idea. I just want to make sure. Whoever is responsible for doing that does it.
Yes, I mean, I think we're we're still also trying to figure out what's the best method because I know. We'll learn things as we go on. Um we'll also, I mean, I think a really good point, which I forgot to mention, you know, this is a negotiations year. And you know, the budget committee, that that's not what we do. And so we're kind of waiting to hear from that too, which, you know, kind of, yep. That all feeds into each other. So um kind of depending on maybe where we even end up to might impact where we we go out. But it just, it it was a good discussion about how we should probably be more creative with communication this year and. Really happy to hear what you think is the best way. Is it a YouTube video link that gets, you know, sent out? Or is it a PowerPoint print? What is it? Great. And so um yeah.
One more question.
It's ignoring you.
Yes. I read at least this text to me.
So on this, what the one point nine percent base increase, because it's a largely due to the debt. One point, one point one nine. One point one nine increase. So we just have to kind of keep in mind then, because it's going to be easy to fall into the trap of like, well, the past couple of years budgets increased five percent. Because this is because we don't have this new debt, we're not like filing back on again yet. So that is going to be an interesting. Right? Because it's not just all of a sudden like over, you have all this money to spend now because hey, we can go to four percent, right? Because this is going, there's going to be a cap. Well, it might just be a down couple of years before we put more debt on.
True.
Right?
That, I mean, that's a possibility, right? So what we want to be sure that we do is if we're looking at a three percent budget instead of the one point one nine. That whatever we're putting in that budget are one time items.
Right.
Right? They're not items that we're going to continually, you know, expand.
Okay.
Because you want to be able to just leave yourself that correct.
This year to put some of these short term one time things in that aren't going to be long term.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions, Kim?
Yeah, and and I and I didn't say this at the meeting, but I had actually meant to, um so I'll say it now. Um you know, this because. I'm not sure how much clarity we're gonna understand on how much is this Norwich tax. I mean, we've been talking about this for two years and. You know, thi- this just might be a year where we have um more warrant articles on the Dresden budget and let people decide. I mean, I think that that might be an option. Um and so especially for talking projects. Which really lends itself to warrant articles pretty well, you know, then we can kind of actually get our answer as opposed to trying to guess. And be wrong. Um and so I just, I just throw that out there with maybe we and and having two versions. But maybe we think of these as projects, you know, I just wanted to. Maybe that's where we end up too.
Yeah. And we are in the early stages of this, but I mean, I think it's also part of the education piece is going to be understanding like. What what would move the needle down to only twenty five percent increase, right? And is that really worth that?
That's what that was, right? That was the main discussion we had last.
So I think.
The sensitivities and.
Exactly, and especially when we look at the, you know, the split between Norwich and Hanover and what is actually going to move that needle and how much is that going to cost? And is there a difference to voters between twenty five and twenty seven? They're both not great. We know that, right? Like that's, yeah, a lot either way.
Jimmy.
Yeah, and just in closing, the third piece really is the revenue, right? We we need to look at the revenue. Yeah, we turn one.
But we.
Take an early look at it shortly. Um we won't true it up, you know, until a little bit into October, November, but we'll know the splits. We'll know the splits by the next time we discuss it.
The splits being like Norwich versus Hanover ADM.
Anyone else? Okay, moving on to facilities. I don't see Tony.
Oh, you see me.
Oh.
So I do, actually. So I was, I think we were kind of hoping to get this approved tonight, which I realize is not on the reaction.
Uh you're right.
Yeah, so I mean, we we could approve it at the next one. I guess maybe just if administration. I guess this is a great time if you disagree with the approach, just because it gives them more time versus we don't meet until late.
So instead of adding it uh late, uh does anyone, everyone have a head nod for the principals? Everyone agrees.
Okay, then we can approve it next.
Yeah.
Okay.
And for people at home, everyone gave a an affirmative head nod. Um so moving on to facilities.
Right, so facilities is me today and I have, I was briefed earlier. Um this afternoon with Tony and also met with or get meet with, but discussed the two projects with. Our pathways consultant who's overseeing, you know, with the contractors. So first I'll tell you about the two large projects that are going on. Um and I'm gonna try to read it quickly and. Make it concise. Um the track, so as you've seen out back. Uh the site work is um it's being done in two pieces. There's two contracts on the track. One is the earth and ground moving part and two is the actual track surfacing part. So the site work under contract one is L and M and that's approximately eighty five percent complete at this time. And then the resurfacing contract, which is AstroTurf, is approximately fifty percent complete. Um the rain, the last two weeks of the rain put us behind a little bit. We were doing pretty good. Um the drainage and grading for the track, the practice field and the field event areas are all complete. The track and field event areas have been paid. The remaining work includes the final field event area components, including concrete pads, sand pits, takeoff boards, netting and equipment. The loam and seeding on all the grass areas and the fence replacement. And then the last part of the project will be the south tree line plantings where we push the track that we. The track back five feet and so the fence lines going back a little ways. We already cut the trees down. If you live in that area, you probably know that. Um and then the cert- the track surfacing and striping will start thirty days after the paving. That paving has to set for thirty days, okay, before they can put the synthetic track over the top. And that will start around nine twenty. Um all the work except the fencing and track surfacing should be done in two weeks. Then they'll come back and they'll put the final surfacing down. We'll be putting signs up to tell they stay off it, please. Um and then they look to have that done and completed by October first.
So the infields where the grass is going, are they going to have enough growing season?
Yeah, it's actually some of the best time to plant.
Better.
Yeah, we've uh we, so we use um. Uh Mister Holmes, right, who has, who came on board, I don't know, three years ago, I think. And he handles all of our athletic fields that are true grass. Um and so he's been in consultation with um. Foremost, who uh put in a lot of different um like baseball fields and different kinds of um field events. They specialize in baseball fields. And so they're ordering the appropriate type of grass that will have the appropriate growing seasons. Um the baseball field, uh L and M also was um the most aggressive bidder on the baseball field. Uh that they've completed the fence removal. We've moved the dugouts. We've completed the field striping and rough grading over all the site. The drainage work is started and there will take a few weeks. Remaining work includes field filling and final grading, the final surfaces, including the warning track and the infield. Loam and seeding are access roadway and pedestrian path and fencing. And all of that work should be completed by October first as well. So um they're moving along pretty well. That one, I don't believe we've been, we're off target because we wanted to see that in the in the fall. Um the type of seed that they use germinates better in the fall. Um here at Hanover High School. Been very busy this summer. We installed a new school board at the turf field. We've installed heat pumps in the band room. It gets very hot up there and negatively impacts the instruments from the temperature levels go too high. Um we polished concrete floors outside of the gymnasium. We took up VC tile and this helps to cut down on maintenance costs because it takes two weeks of labor to strip and wax VC tile. Um this just needs to be buffed and it's only on occasion. We already own the the equipment for that. Uh and we don't have to shut down corridors in order to maintain the floor. So that's lovely. Uh we painted interiors, the entire science wing, approximately nine rooms. Uh the firebox repair is scheduled to be done the next few weeks. We had did all of our regular deep cleaning and we also hired an architectural designer to review the atrium entryway. Keeping in mind safety needs and also may require a few changes to the admin wing. So they're coming up with um designs for that. August, we'll be sending in the tap water samples for the lead testing and we'll wait that to come back. Um Tony will be here definitely in October to report on the fire marshals uh walkthrough visits. Those are scheduled for September. We don't have set dates, but they should hopefully have the reports back to us by October so that we can, he'll come in and discuss all this with you. Um at RMS, we've hired a electric, oh no, mechanical engineer. And they're working on the plan for the ventilation in the living arts room. We've also purchased a commercial dishwasher for the living arts room. Following up with. You have to forget who the company is and know where it is. Following up with. A specialty company, Zinwall Paul, you should know this. Um it to look at putting in the uh pavilion that they've been waiting patiently for forever. Um and that the Burn Foundation actually gave us a donation right before COVID went crazy with material costs. That's why we've held off actually. Um they put a pavilion up similar to what they're looking for at one of my Wallpole schools um down there and it came out beautifully. And so I'm gonna approach them because I know how much that one costs um to see if they could come up here and do something with us. And I think that's it for maintenance um and facilities. Transportation, we're moving along this year. It's been kind of bumpy and rocky because. Not all of our parents have filled out their um back to school paperwork. We have over five hundred and two families that have not registered their students yet. Oh yes, that's lovely. I'm sorry. So I have seven hundred and sixty eight people who filled out things for riding our buses. I know they're not all going to ride full time because I know that we probably can't fit all those children on, you know, the amount of school buses we have. And but this happens every year. So we'll be putting out notice. I wanted to do it today and then get to it. Be putting out notice. I think I'm going to do an all schools email, all parent email tomorrow. To let them know what the plan is. We've adjusted route ten, route two A and route. Uh Norwich five. I will notify those parents specifically who are affected by those changes. Uh and we've done it in order to improve some times getting into the schools. And also to alleviate some overcrowding on some of those routes. Um we did because of what's going on with the tuition students. Last year, we had cut out the Heartland route when we did budgeting. We picked up thirteen ninth graders from Heartland. Uh elementary this year. So that puts them over the twenty mark up to twenty three, I think, twenty two or twenty three students. The deal we had made with Heartland was if you have twenty or more, we'll send a bus. We were able to arrange for a small bus. It was a sixteen passenger. We'll be going down to pick up the students. Uh from Heartland, we should have approximately, depending on what sport's going on, between nine and fourteen riders that I know of right now. So that's great. We'll see how that goes. If it wings off, then we'll have a different conversation. Um food service, yay, we hired Richmond Middle School a second person. Uh Austin was amazing chef and he pulled it off by himself with amazing help from the Richmond Middle School admin team. And and other folks in the building last year. Um so we have another lady starting this time. It should be a great addition. Uh the high school here has a full complement for the cafe, so we should be planning. Um what else? I don't know, that's food and transportation. Uh anyway, finance, we already did that. I think that's it.
Any questions for Jamie?
And maybe.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, moving on to Prager University Financial Literacy. This is uh Deb.
Yeah, I asked uh to put this on the agenda just because I I don't know how many of you are following this, but the. The State Board of Education was asked to consider a proposal by Edable to give Prager University, which is not a university. The uh business of providing a financial literacy course to. Students in New Hampshire schools and a couple of people had reached out to me and said, well, we don't have to do that, do we? And in fact, if the State Board of Education approves it, yes, we have to allow students to meet their financial literacy. Requirement for graduation by taking this course. The State Board of Education met a little over a week ago and they postponed it to the September fourteenth meeting. At which I I actually was surprised by the postponement, but there's been a tremendous amount of pushback. Uh the Valley News did an editorial about it. The the. Prager University not only isn't a university, but it has developed a lot of online programs that are highly suspect. That are by many people's judgment racist, things that say, you know, if you look at American history, that slaves. Or enslaved people benefited from being enslaved. That one of the concerns was that there be enough firewalls put in place so that students who went on to the website didn't. Get into other areas that they have posted about, but the bottom line is just the diminishing. Of public education, moving things online and also opening the door to these really quite right wing. Providers of not very educational information. I plan to go down to Concord for the September fourteenth meeting of the. I plan to go down to Concord for the September fourteenth meeting of the Board of Education. I don't expect the Board to give me authority to speak on behalf of the Board. I will speak on my own behalf. I haven't figured out what I want to say. So that's why you don't have anything, but I would then ask you to give me permission to speak on your behalf. But I've, I've done stuff like this before and I'm careful not to say I'm here on behalf of the whole Dresden School Board. But they do listen when people say they are school board members or when, as the Assistant Superintendent and Kearsarge spoke very eloquently. About his concern about this program. So if anybody else wants to go with me, I have a room in my car. Um, people are encouraged to write letters, but I do want, I thought it was important to put it on the agenda so that parents. Who are all in huge numbers of attending on Zoom, know that, yes, in fact, the Hanover High School diploma. Will have to give credit for this if the Board of Education approves it.
Uh, Kelly?
We would not be required to give this perk, to use.
It's a menu of different courses that a student.
But if a student selects it, we have to give them credit.
Linda?
Um, yeah, question, um, because it's uh, Cross State District, Vermont, people are welcome to join you in your car.
Oh, absolutely. And I'm a good driver, I can.
Any other?
Yeah, and so this is part of, um, is it, I'm looking to people who know, but is it part of learn any, learn everywhere? Or is it like?
These are the new curriculum changes. Last year. It's not part of that initiative. These are just new. Areas that needed to be taught.
Satisfying. So, so I do understand that the, the financial literacy was added, I believe, last year or two. COVID's a little blurry, um, you know, where it's now part of an adequate education.
Right.
But the actual. Yeah, wh- what's taught, right, is, is still loose, right? But this is an option that students could choose to do it. And I know that there are programs like Learn Everywhere. And Belax and others that are all options that.
Rights.
Some apparently, you know, mandate us to receive if students choose to go elsewhere, right? Part of that. So I, I was just trying to figure out if it's, what program it was or where this option would occur. Is it, is it a Belax? You know, I just, I don't know.
It's not, yeah, it's its own standalone organization. It's, yeah, it's standalone.
Okay, but it's not.
And interestingly, oh, sorry. There are a lot of banks that offer financial literacy coursework. They do things that are, you know, things like Bank of America that offer programs that are accessible for students. Who have neurodiverse ways of accessing information. Some of them offer programs in Spanish. So there, there are other options if. Someone's interested in making it easier for students to get this information. It's not like Prager is the old, or Prager Non You. Is the only one that you could choose from, but it's a very deliberate. Um, strategy on the part of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So moving on to business requiring action. And I'll note that the RMS student handbook changes were included in the RMS letter. So.
Um, yeah.
Does anyone want to take the motion to approve by consent?
Move to approve items B, C, D, E, F, and G by consent.
Lisa's second. Kelly?
McConnell, yes.
Hartman, yes.
Tramon, yes.
Johnson, yes.
Christie, yes.
Nelson, yes.
Barry, yes.
Moving on to the report of the chair, um. As, as Kim should, uh, stated, we're right now kicking off budget process. We're also uh, moving along with a strategic plan. I will note that another law that just came on the books is the um, non-public. Uh, meeting notes have to be made available after ten, ten years unless. Uh, it's voted to keep them non-public. I don't know if our districts have started looking at what our processes to. Vet our non-public stuff, um, but I would suggest we may start, wanna take a look at how we're gonna do this. Because I, I assume the school board would have to decide whether it stays non-public or.
Yeah, yeah, we could revoke.
Right.
To keep it.
But you have to, I think you, you can't, you can't do just a blanket. We're gonna, you have to go through each, you have to go through each document. So. Um.
Rick, can I just clarify something on that?
Yes.
It, it, was that for sealed minutes only?
Yes.
Right, so we, we, we do that very rarely. I think in the entire time I've been on the board, it's happened once.
Oh, it's not, it's not non-public, it's sealed.
It's the sealed minutes that need to be reviewed, right? Because otherwise, all of our non-public minutes are already posted.
That's true.
Yeah, because we have to.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So it's the sealed and I think I remember doing one sealed like three or four years ago, so. Tony?
Is this retroactive suspect, minutes that are now ten years old will be unsealed or does it start today? Minutes.
I don't think they clarified that yet, but um, I would assume they're gonna. Requires to go back through our historical documents to check. I don't know.
Because on, like tomorrow or whatever the effective date is, all those sealed minutes would become, if it's. Going back will become unsealed unless we ask.
Yeah.
So I think. Related question that nobody has to answer right now, but how long do we have to keep minutes? Like.
Right, like, do we have like minutes and minutes?
Actually have minutes from probably eighteen eighty-something when. Hanover School District.
Where they store.
Yeah, downstairs in a, we have them, there's a special location downstairs in the building here where all the really old books are. And then all the ones from nineteen, what, sixty probably-ish are upstairs in our SAU office.
It's gonna look through.
Amazing.
Yeah.
Rest order treat.
I, I'm just looking back through notes about this topic and we're required, we are now required to keep a sealed minutes log. So I think since Neil was saying we haven't sealed the minutes of many, might, we just wanna, need to keep track of those.
Yeah.
And. Yeah.
Okay. Uh, anyone have any committee reports? Jay Nun, uh, Superintendent's Report.
Jay just wanted me to send everyone best wishes for a great start to the new school year. So we're excited about that happening next week.
Uh, Assistant Superintendent's Report.
Okay, and I'll follow up. We've had a few opening activities that have taken place over the past week or so. We had our new staff orientation last week. Um, we had many new staff and I think you'll be excited to meet some of the new teachers that have been hired and staff members across the district. We've had really wonderful hires and we took staff members on a bus trip around the district. See all of the schools and the principals gave a little tour, information about each of the schools. So that was really wonderful. And then the schools held um, orientations themselves after our SAU orientation. So that was the second year that we've done that. We've gotten great feedback about that, which has been positive. We're planning for the opening barbecue next Monday that you're hosting along with Jay. So we're excited about that. Hope you can all attend. It will be from eleven to one o'clock. And I've already had two hundred people respond that they'll be attending. And I'm sure every day I look every few hours that the number increases, so. Mel is organizing that for us in the cafeteria here at the high school. And so I, I've heard also a lot of good feedback about that. I've been working um, on our online supervision and evaluation system. You know, we put that into place last year. So this year we've been updating forms. I met with all the principals over the summer and we've talked about a principal evaluation. And have um, done it in outline for that and I've been working on forms for that. So that's an exciting change and that's taken up a lot of time over the past few weeks, just getting it. All the forms changed, uploaded, new people in. People who have resigned taken out, so um, but I'm really pleased with how that's gone. People have been using it for our supervision and evaluation and now we're also starting to use it for our professional development. So that was a big undertaking, but it's exciting to see a lot of these things coming to fruition over the summer. I've been doing a lot of work on the grants. We had a very successful bear camp at the high school and summer tutoring. And that was thanks to Tim Bearby. I know Linda was helped out with the bear camp.
Yeah.
And several other staff members. And we had a good turnout for that. I saw many of the students who attended it, our incoming ninth graders on the day that we had our new staff orientation. So it's fun to see all of these new people in the building. And um, and also the tutoring, those were all funded by our Title I programs. And along those same lines, I've been working on the grants for this coming school year. We have had approval for the coach, the instructional coach at middle school. There's about eighteen thousand dollars, fourteen, eighteen thousand dollars in that fund right now that will go toward instructional coaching. We also have some Title IV funds that will go to expanding our woodworking program at the middle school. That's been really popular. And so we are able to purchase some equipment which will allow for um, even greater. Um, involvement with the kids in doing wood, wood turning of bowls at a higher level. So that's really exciting. And it only took me a few times to get that through, which was amazing. So lots of good stuff on that front as well. So, and I think that's about it for my um, report tonight.
Um, this isn't a question so much as I just wanted to give Robin a little bit of a shout out. Um, Dan and Witz is where a lot of conversations take place. And I had a conversation there today with two different teachers who talked about the fact that the curriculum is being written down. Has proven to be extremely difficult to get started, but really, really, really helpful. And they said something that I hadn't heard you mention before, that it's been especially helpful for the specials teachers. Because they can see what's happening in the regular classroom and better figure out. How their work as a foreign language specialist or an art teacher or something else. Um, can be helpful to the third grade classroom and the sixth grade classroom. So I just wanted to let you know that, you know, if. You may not always hear it, but you are appreciated. So.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Any other comments or questions for Robin? Okay, moving on to Business Administrator's Report.
Yes, I put these in here so long ago. Terrible. So quickly, two weeks will fly by here. Um, first of all, because this is the Dresden School Board meeting. And I don't know, we might have a different audience. I haven't checked it. I want to introduce Teresa Taylor, who's going to be joining us as the Finance Director. For SAU seventy and all of the um, partner school districts. Um, she's spending a day a week with us until she comes on full time on the eighteenth of September. So we put her right to work. It's been a great day. Um, she's getting the flavor of the board meetings, which is awesome. Um, so anyway, to the financials, um. I can't wait for her to come full time so that we can wrap up the fiscal year and bring some ending financial reports to you. Because with everything going on, I have not gotten to it. Um, anyway, the twenty-one, twenty-two audit report was finalized back in, I don't even know, it's been a few months. Or a couple of months. It's attached here. It has been on the website. Uh, we passed it to the website and then it came in and was finalized. Um, the unassigned fund balance came in at three thirty-nine, three hundred thirty-nine thousand eighty-two dollars. Um, there were no significant findings on the audit report for twenty-one, twenty-two. There, I did open up and attach the governance letter because it didn't have anything in it that was of a. Um, sensitive nature. Uh, sometimes if there is information in there that concerns our technology or anything like that. We won't, we don't share that because we don't want to share our weak spots, right? Um, there are a couple of repeat comments you've seen before. Um, I need to follow up with them on a couple of these. It's fine. They're not um, hugely concerning to me. Um, the treasurer's duty, she, she does separately reconcile the bank account statements. So I don't know why they didn't recognize that in there. Um, she does not keep a third leg set of books. Which is what they really want to see. Um, I think we can work on that moving forward. It's just, there's a lot of moving parts in the Dresden um, realm anyway. Um, the budgeting repeat comment, I need to go to the state of New Hampshire because I'm ninety percent certain. I'm now, I'm gonna say ninety-eight percent certain that this is not a finding and we do not, we are a unicorn in the state of New Hampshire. Due to our marriage with Norwich for Dresden. And so we uh, budget differently because of how Vermont budgets. And there, there were certain, and I say this every year, that they write this down and I tell them that, but that's okay. Um, there are certain things that we do not follow or budgeting law for the state of New Hampshire. For instance, uh, deliberative session, right? We hold a deliberative session, but the public cannot overturn any of the warrant articles. Or any of the content of the warrant articles. All the other, I'm pretty sure other than Rivendell, all of the other school districts in the state of New Hampshire. When they have a deliberative session, there's votes from the floor that can change anything on that budget. We don't do it that way because of our marriage. So I know for a fact, and I'm just trying to find the information in all of our old. Uh, meeting minutes and everything that's come in over the years where the state um, gave us that. Pass on this part of the law. Uh, because I know, I know, I know what happened, speaking with prior persons who worked here and prior board members. Um, so that one I'm not concerned about because it really doesn't apply to us. Um, the student activity accounts, I have spoken to each one of the folks. Uh, and who, I'm gonna say, one second. Um, the Hanover High School, we've had so much turnover. I don't even think. That the people who, that this was written up on are even still here, okay? So we have new folks in the positions at the Hanover High School and in the Hanover High School Athletics. So I'm pretty sure with this next audit. Or maybe the one after that because they came in mid-year and so they might write me up on this this year. I don't know. Um, anyway, it's been a busy year. Richmond Middle School, it was one deposit that they pulled and so, um, you know, we do the best we can. There's one person handling these things along with our finance department. And, you know, they're not always made within five days, okay? And they're not huge amounts and we're not dealing with, for the most part, their checks, check the closets. Um, and so we'll just try to do a better job, right? And so all we can do, um. And it, you know, so I, if you have other things you want to add there, I'm happy to answer them, but. It's not the only one. Um, and then all the new Gatsby pronouncements that are coming down the pipe that we'll have to make changes for. Um, in the finance office are all listed there. Um, I think, I don't know, probably the technology, we don't really do our subscription-based IT engines. But um, there was one, the, the conduit debt obligations and there's another one about. The changes in lease agreements, which will probably, um, in, in, you'll see that when they do the audits and they write them up. Um, if you have specific questions on the audit or if anybody looking through them has specific questions, I'm happy to follow up and answer them. Um, if I can't answer them, I'll reach out to the auditing firm and ask them for their input.
Thank you, Jamie. Any comments or questions? Is this a document that I need to come in and sign or is that the only one that gets filed with the state?
We, uh, we're all set. It's been sent in and when we first got that and we filed them with the DRA, so they're all set. Um, and you've already, you've all already signed the documents that you needed.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
So this time I'm gonna open it back up for public comments. Is there anyone here? Is there anyone online? No. Okay, moving on, uh, agenda topics for next meeting, uh, please get them to me. Probably no later than September nineteenth because our next meeting is September twenty-six. Um, I wish all the staff, faculty and students a great beginning of a school year. It's gonna be exciting. Um, and that is it. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Yeah. I moved to adjourn the meeting at nine twelve PM. Okay.
McConnell, yes.
Hartman, yes.
Chairman, yes.
Johnson, yes.
Kristi, yes.
Nelson, yes.
Barry, yes.
Oh, yes.